Good afternoon. Our June 28, 2018 Longview City Council Work Session is now called to order. We will now discuss recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Ms. Ishihara.
Okay.
Don't get comfortable.
Faster than I was expecting. All right. Well, as everyone knows, the Comprehensive Plan Committee is a group of individuals from our community, two from each council district, that has formed and with the goal of making sure that the Comprehensive Plan moves forward. The committee recently submitted recommendations to council to be considered, and that is what we're going to talk about tonight. Which way do I point this? That way? So, the Comprehensive Plan had three subcommittees that met and are making separate recommendations to council: public safety and facilities, pedestrian and transportation, and parks. We'll do public safety and facilities first. So, each council member has received the letter from the Comprehensive Plan Committee. This tonight is an opportunity to look at each project individually, ask questions, if you have them, that I will probably refer to city staff to answer, or have discussion about your thoughts, feelings, or concerns about each project. The first project identified under public safety is a new police department. The CPAC Committee is recommending a new building at a new location. That estimated cost is $33 million. You can see there where they have it projected to be located. I'm going to keep moving, so if there are any questions or anything, feel free to stop me, but I'm going to keep talking. The next, under public safety or facilities, is Fire Station 5. This would include a renovation and addition. Just for your knowledge, and I know many of you were at the CPAC Committee meetings, for each of these options, the committee did look at several options in regard to each facility and took into consideration the recommendations from chiefs and other members of staff. Fire Station 5 would be renovation and addition. Estimated cost, $5.3 million. Fire Station 7 would be a new two-story building with three bays with an estimated cost of $4.6 million. Fire Station 8 would be a new location with three bays. Estimated cost, $4.9 million. And then the Fire and Police Training Center. Initially, this project was considered to be at a higher cost, and through the CPAC Committee, we looked at phasing this. As all of you are aware, the current training facility is located in Stamper Park, in residential area, and there's been ongoing concerns with that burn building being located there. So, this initial concept, or Phase 1, would include relocating that burn building so that training could continue for our fire department. Estimated cost, $2.2 million. So, the total for the public safety or city facilities recommendation out of the CPAC Committee is $52.4 million. That also includes, as you remember, moving the police department to a new building. So, we've included in that cost estimate $1.9 million to renovate the current police department to include City Hall and additional city facilities. As you all are aware, we rent in some areas, so the city is in need of some additional space that would allow us to bring people into our own buildings, and moving the police department to a new facility and utilizing those facilities would take some renovation, but could also increase the amount of space that we have. Questions, comments, discussion that anyone wants to have now? I shall keep moving.
Well, we're going to come back to this, and we're just going to keep going.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. First question. You got a question? Okay. In renovating City Hall at $1.9 million, in my understanding is we will then move the remainder of outlying city offices to City Hall in that building, correct?
The Administration Department and potentially the Parks and Rec Risk Partners in Prevention, those facilities are currently renting.
And what is that rental cost per month that we would then no longer be paying? Does anybody have that on top of their head?
I know the CID is $90,000 a year for what we'd save for moving the police department out of renting.
Do Kevin can answer? $142,000 for rental space that would be removed. But that says City Hall renovation is actually renovating the old police station.
Right. I just wanted to make sure we understood that in renovating that, we would then be saving rental income that we are now paying at $142,000 per year.
Correct.
Okay. Is HR staying there?
No.
So, we're moving HR, we're moving the police investigations going to the new station?
Right.
So, are we going to have anything that's under rental anymore?
I don't believe so.
Okay. That's throwing money away.
So, in other words, I mean rudimentary math, that $1.9 million pays itself off in ten years.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Next subcommittee is pedestrian or transportation. And here, we took a look at some of the projects that were both located in the Comprehensive Plan as recommended through that process, and also on our capital improvements project list. The first one, and these are, the way that I presented them, are in ranked order from the CPAC Committee. So, number one, under this subcommittee, is Moberly, doing a complete street there, otherwise known, I think, as a road diet or a complete street, which would include making it more pedestrian-friendly, adding bike lanes and sidewalks, and making it more aesthetically pleasing. That would be a picture of what a complete street looks like. The next was downtown Cotton Street scape. So, of course, we just celebrated finishing all of our downtown construction, but kind of extending that. So, from where the construction downtown ended on Cotton Street, continuing that, and actually, there's several of these for Cotton Street. So, from Cotton Street where the current renovations went to now would be, oops, too far, all the way down to Maud Cobb at Grand Street is what we looked at doing. So, there would be three different segments that we'd price separately there. This one is a real road widening. This one is in Ed's District, and would have an estimated cost of $7.1 million. This project has been on our capital improvements list for several years and just has not received funding. Fairmont Street Reconstruction is in Steve's District, also has been on our capital improvements list for many years and has just not received funding to date. And then, of course, in the Comprehensive Plan, we talked a lot about entryways and making those better-looking into Longview, and so, one of the recommendations is to increase the, well, reestablish sort of here at High and Moberly entryway to make that a prettier entryway. And that cost would be $3.3 million. So, the total for the recommendations for pedestrian and transportation is $27.09 million. You can see all of those listed there. Questions, comments, concerns on these? I shall keep moving. On the parks, here, if you remember, in prior bond package, Lear Park had been funded through some phases, so this would be completing. I think it would be technically Phase 3 of Lear Park. So, completing that with some finished baseball and softball fields, finishing jackman splashpad, completing a trail around the lake that's out there, and adding a turf soccer field with some lighting and pavilion to increase our ability to host tournaments and other sports play out there. So, completing Lear Park for $8.8 million. Improving existing parks, high on our Comprehensive Plan list was maintaining the parks that we currently have, in addition to needing additional park space. But here, we looked at taking our parks list that we renovate right now, once a year, in order, and just doing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 at one time. So, you can see the list of parks there: Lois Jackson, McOrter, East and West, Patterson, Rollins, Spring Creek, Spring Hill, and Stamper and Womack for $7.36 million. That would be significant improvements to already-existing parks to improve those neighborhoods. Next is Cargill Trail. That one is in my district. That would be a trail that's been in existence for over 25 years, that is currently asphalt, would remain asphalt, but needs to be redone. It's been repaired so many times that it just needs to be redone. That would be $1.35 million to redo Cargill Trail. And then the park summary here, you see also includes, although it didn't have a slide, the Arboretum, which would include renovating their building for use at the Arboretum for $1.5 million. So, the total for recommendations for parks is $24.71 million. Questions, comments, concerns on these?
I've got a couple of questions. On the soccer fields, I've had a lot of people asking why we need turf, and I've talked to Scott about that a little bit, but...
Do you want Scott to address that or answer that now?
Well, I don't know. Is this when you want to address things, or?
Sure.
Okay. Sure.
Good evening, and/or afternoon, and thanks for the opportunity to speak about that. Actually, our soccer fields, and really are currently used quite heavily in the spring and in the fall, and primarily, it is just for soccer. Allowing for them to be in artificial turf would allow us to use them for other sporting events such as lacrosse, rugby, flag football, developing sports that are coming along, but then also extend the seasons. Currently, we close the fields essentially right before Thanksgiving and then keep them closed until February, or until March, to allow the turf to restore and become good for the spring. Same thing over the summer. We close them down for about six or eight weeks, again, to allow for that recovery and repair of those. And so, having two full-size soccer fields would allow for us to have 12 consecutive months of use, but then also adding lights to some of the fields. Currently, we only have two fields that have lights on them, and so, the ability for us to play during the week is pretty limited because they're only on two of the larger fields. So, if we had four fields that had lights on them, and then two of the fields were in turf, we could use them and extend the season, but then also provide for opportunities for tournaments to be hosted on the weekends. One of the things that, when we look at larger regional events for soccer or for flag football and those kind of things, the first thing they ask about is the number of lit fields and the ability to be able to play during rain and/or weather events. And right now, during heavy rains or anything like that, we can't play because of the field conditions that would be not so good, so...
So, it would be the full-size fields? It wouldn't be the little kids' fields or anything like that?
No. It would only be two large fields, like 120 yards by 80. So, you could, like I said, you could do, they would be full-size football fields, but also full-size soccer fields, but then they could be divided to have multiple soccer fields. You could run instead of going long ways. You could go to the wide side. So, you could actually, so again, be multi-configured, so...
What's the life expectancy of those, that grass?
Of the artificial turf? It's 10 to 12 years. And the operational cost, again, a lot of people assume that when you go to artificial turf, then your cost, your life expectancy costs are going to be significantly reduced, especially your annual operation costs, and they are. However, when you consider the upfront cost of artificial turf, if you consider it on the 10 to 12-year lifespan of that, the costs are pretty similar to natural grass. The difference being that you can play year-round and in inclement weather, and so, your just ability to use the fields is much greater on artificial turf as opposed to grass. So, it's not strictly from a standpoint of cost savings operationally, but the overall use and availability of the fields that is the perspective that we're coming from.
So, we're not actually saving anything by putting this grass on there?
Annual budget-wise, we would. Annual budget-wise, we would, because we budget for the maintenance and our annual budget appropriation, whereas, if we were to do this project, then those funds would be allocated on capital improvements and/or bond issues. So, it would save us some money, but if you just want, if you're going to ask me and talk to me about what the overall costs are going to be, we would have annual savings, but again, it's in consideration of the whole.
What are the revenues that Lear Park brings in every year?
Lear Park revenue?
Versus the operational cost?
Oh, well, we spend significantly more directly on Lear Park than what we do generate directly. So, the vast majority of the revenue that is derived from Lear Park comes in from additional sales tax and/or hotel occupancy tax. Last year, we estimated the hotel occupancy tax alone generated about $75,000. Again, that's probably on the low side of my estimation, just on the hotel occupancy tax. Sales tax-wise, you're probably looking at about twice that amount as far as direct, you know, indirect, again, from the sales tax generated off that facility. And that's just on the tournaments alone. That doesn't account for the local...
So, you're estimating about $225,000 in revenue?
On tax revenue.
On tax revenue?
Yes, sir.
What are the operational costs of that? Do you know?
Well, essentially, we have two crews that are essentially assigned to that facility, so, you know, you're probably looking at, you know, $300,000 to $400,000. We don't account for it directly because it's in our overall budget, but probably $300,000 to $400,000 on the cost.
So, by doing these other two fields, how much more revenue do you think we're going to gain from this?
Probably by everything included, our operational costs would not increase because we wouldn't anticipate having additional staff, but the opportunities to generate revenue, we would probably get closer to being able to recover all the costs.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. On the, oh, so, in 10 to 12 years, when that turf is worn out, how do you see paying for new turf? Would you be, include that in each budget cycle to kind of build up a pot for that, or do we have to go back and say, hey, we need another bond election to get more turf?
Right. So, the initial cost of installing turf or greater because you have to put the infrastructure in place, once you have the turf, then the costs are significantly reduced because now you're just replacing the actual, the top part of it, the grass itself. So, the costs are significantly less. And again, that would be up to council as to how we chose to move forward with knowing that 10 to 12 years out, we're going to have that replacement cost. So, is that through an annual appropriation to a reserve fund, you know, of, say, $25,000 or $50,000 to set aside to be able to be available, or is it, you just kick the can down the road and you say, in 10 to 12 years, that's another council's decision to be able to make, so...
And then, one other thing. I saw McOrter, I saw you did a bunch of work there just recently at McOrter?
On Gibson Field. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, there's a lot more included in this than, I guess, the current facilities, the money that you're going to spend at McOrter?
Yes, sir. So, that's the, essentially, looking at the park as a comprehensive look. One of the things that we've done in the annual budget appropriation is essentially replace playgrounds as well as some minor improvements to parks. What we chose to do in this situation is say, okay, if we want to take a look at each park and all of the wants and needs within that park to make it, to reach the highest level of service that we feel that this community is demanding from the Comprehensive Plan, what needs to be accomplished? And that's how we went about this. And so, at McOrter, that would be, a significant amount of that money would go to the west side of things to bring it up to current standards. Essentially, that's not a usable facility as far as tournament or league play is concerned, and that would bring it back. Probably Dr. Mack probably remembers when his kids probably played on those fields over there, but no, that's, right now, it's just used for practices. But then also, the age, just the age of the facility, it still has wooden poles, and if you go out there, some of them are leaning pretty significantly, and so, it would be replacing all the light fixtures and a lot of the fencing out there, but then also taking care of the park itself. It has the largest, most beautiful pavilion in all of our park system, except maybe the green now with the newest one out there. So, but the playground and the other park amenities are not quite up to the standard of that pavilion itself. And so, having additional amenities within the park that are commiserate with that pavilion, I think, would increase the use of that park, which is very heavily utilized right now, as Mr. Moore would probably attest to. But, so, it would overall just increase the activity for not only our community, but as well as the sports tourism aspect, because now our tournament, that would be a true tournament facility for us to be able to utilize.
We've got a number of requests for additional basketball courts. See, that was what I was going to find out. Do we have any money in there for basketball?
Yes, and so, both at Stamper, so Stamper would be a renovation of the basketball courts over there, but then also at McOrter. And I can't remember, I think it was at Broughton that we had, we had put in there the cost of having a covered basketball courts, just open-air. I don't know if you've probably been down on 259 when you go through Henderson, there's that large, I think it's Henderson. There's the large basketball courts and those kind of areas right there. And so, in one of these, we put in there, I get them all.
Scott, just looking at the funding for Stamper and Womack, can you elaborate just a little bit more? You're saying basketball courts, what else? I mean, because there's a lot that needs to be done.
Yes, there is, and we've identified a lot of those specifically on the Womack side of things. That facility, as you have been out there the past couple of years with football, it needs some, the softball field that is there that is currently being used for flag football, we need to raise the standard and the level of that facility to be a true flag football field for the youth that are out there. So, it'd be completely renovating that entire side of it to allow for the way that that facility is currently being used.
Great. Does it also include anything having to do with the concession or the ticket booth that has no electricity?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It would. And then also, that would include renovations and updates to the splashpad that's out there, and Broughton would as well. Again, we feel that there's a certain level of service that all of our parks need to have, and it's much higher than what we currently are. And that's what our attempt is with all of these, is to be able to raise that level of service to provide what we believe is the best thing for our community, and they have requested through the Comprehensive Plan. And so, it's not just nickel and diming it. It's, I mean, as you can see, it's a pretty significant cost, and we understand that, but if you don't, we feel that if we don't put the best facilities out there possible, then, you know, we don't want to settle. We just, we want to have what's the best, so...
Other questions for Scott?
Scott, I know we can't, we can't live in the past, we have to live in the future.
Yes, sir.
Because if we're living in the past or the present, then we're behind. So, my question to you is this, I don't know if you, I should have asked this beforehand because it's hard for you to pull this off the top of your head, but, you know, when we talk about our parks and especially when talking about Lear Park, you know, that was, I forgot, that was '95 or something?
'98, I believe, is what it all started.
'95 or '96 we voted on it, '98, or I don't remember when it was. But, you know, do we have any idea what that has brought to our community and economic impact since its inception?
You know, and it's hard to know directly, certainly, but I think you can, by seeing Sonic out there and Whataburger, the development there...
The last figures I saw were 12-something and a half million a year, economic impact for the last 10 or 12 or so years, which is great. I mean, that's all good. But I understand what Mr. Pearl is saying. Those aren't dollars the city's receiving. Those are dollars that the community is receiving, and in turn, the community is putting some of that hopefully back into our city and blah, 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 and I get that. So, my question is this, and I would love to see Lear Park expanded and completed, and $8 million is a lot of money, though.
Yes, sir.
It only cost us 12 and a half to build Lear Park, so that's a big number. But, in my thinking, if we did what we did so many years ago, and it, and it's been, I mean, I don't think anybody can say it's not been successful. It's been successful. It's made Longview an image that we didn't have, you know, back then, whatever. Do you feel like this would do the same thing again? Because the way I look at it, I see it as being another economic impact for the community, but we have to look at quality of life. It's quality of life for the people that live here, too. And I've heard so many times, I get a lot of calls, I'm sure all of y'all do, about inability to play on the fields because they're wet. And I even had one lady said, I don't care if we ruin it for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we want to play on Saturday. And I'm like, me too, but we can, you know, because it does affect us, and we can't control the weather. So, I get the turf thing, and I can see the economic benefits of that, and I can also see 10 years from now, but I'm not a council's going to kick a can down the road. I'm not that way, and I don't think this council's ever been that way. So, I think, whatever we do, we need to have a contingency plan if we, if we're going to push this agenda forward, which I think it's a very worthy opportunity, we have to have a plan for, if the voters decide something like this, how we're going to take care of that 10 years and not put that in someone else's lap, because I have had that in my lap four years ago, and I don't want that for anybody else. That's not the way we're going to do business. So, if we move forward on something like this, we want a plan in place where that's not an issue 10 years from now, where we're trying to say, okay, sorry, y'all can't play on our turf, it's dangerous, we can't replace, we don't have the money. That's not going to be an option, okay? So, make sure you have, you're prepared for that opportunity if this moves forward, okay? That's the point of what I was trying to say.
No, and I appreciate that, and I certainly, we do take that into consideration. And one of the things that I often talk about with sports tourism, and I'm sure some people have heard me say this before, is just as much of a benefit to our community as having those facilities there and bringing people to our community, they're a community asset that our leagues currently play on, that all of our residents play on, you know, seven days a week out there. But in addition to having those facilities here and available and having those tournament-quality fields there, it allows our residents to stay in town and save money rather than going to Dallas and Houston and all these places every weekend. Whenever we do surveys and we talk to our local residents, and they do travel quite a bit, but there's an opportunity, at least for one, you know, once a month, for them to stay in town, and if that facility was not there, they would be doing that. And so, that's taking dollars out of our community, too. So, there's, you know, I think the community overall benefits, and it's hard to derive the total benefit to that, but I believe Mr. Mansfield would echo that having that as well as our trails and all those kind of things are a high-quality-of-life issue that do attract people, whether they're looking to relocate as a company or as an individual and their families.
Correct. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
One other comment. Womack is the only city-owned field that's set up for football, is that correct? Do we have any other city fields that I'm not aware of where they play football?
Lear Park, there's, they're big enough and large enough that you can play football out there. We play flag football out there, but as far as having, truly being, again, I don't like to designate fields as a certain sport, and the reason for that is I think we need to have as much diversification and ability to host whatever is presented to us and that we are able to go out and seek. And so, that's, you know, when I look at it, it's a multi-purpose, rectangular, multi-purpose field, they can host a multitude of different sports and activities.
Yeah, but it's not highly used for football, though?
Primarily, it's used for football, just like the Lear soccer fields are used for soccer, baseball, but again...
So, we can change that dynamic if we change what we have?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I have another question on another subject, the Arboretum.
Yes, sir.
We've got a million and a half dollars we're putting in there for the Arboretum, and you say part of that is to work on the building that the Arboretum Committee bought. Did we have any input, did you have any input into that building, purchasing the building? Was the city involved at all in the purchase of that building?
I attend all of the Arboretum Board Meetings.
Right.
You know, essentially, as an ex-officio member, and so, I do provide my two cents worth to that, so, but as far as having a formal vote or anything like that, no.
So, the city really didn't have much of anything to do with the purchase of that building, then?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
I do, I do have one other thing. I'm going to go back to McOrter a little bit. Since that's really close to where I live, even though it's not in my district, I drive through there quite a bit, and it's really encouraging to see 40 or 50 young men out there playing basketball every day. So, I am going to push for some different basketball courts there because those are people that are in our community that use our community facilities, and I really think that needs to be a big push. Anything that we've got in this town that we utilize as a community, I really think we need to throw the little bit of money there. I've been blessed in my area because I've got the best parks so far, the best infrastructure, other than Lois Jackson, a little bit of work on it. I, you know, I've been really great with that. So, I'm really looking forward to trying to see what we can do with some of these other ones.
No, absolutely, and I agree, and I know Mr. Moore has pushed for volleyball out there, and we've done a little bit there, but certainly basketball, we recognize that, and so, yes, sir.
Mr. Karen, now that you bring that up, have you been approached by the kickball people at all? Because I hear kickball is really taking off in the community, and it's becoming a league sport.
Yeah, we offer spring, summer, and fall leagues, and we have...
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yes, sir.
Because I have a number of kids in the office, they're going, we're playing kickball now, where are you playing kickball?
We have average anywhere from nine to 14 teams every season, but then also, on Sundays over at Stamper Park, a group has been going over there every Sunday and utilizing the field over there as well.
Excellent. Glad to hear that. Thank you, sir.
You're talking about a multi-complex, that Stamper Park really is, I mean, can be utilized for so many things.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So, the last slide I have on here is just a combination of all three of these recommendations. I guess we didn't total it at the bottom, but you guys can do math. That's 105 million is the total of the projects that the Comprehensive Plan put together as a recommendation. Now, our CPAC Committee did specifically talk about that we are making those recommendations, we are asking council to consider a bond election in November, but that we are giving this to council as our priorities from the list, and it'll be up to council to decide what should be placed on the bond, of course, because that decision is up to council and to the voting members of our public. But this is where we landed with an emphasis... But this is where we landed with an emphasis on public safety, because obviously, those are the most important things that we've talked about tonight. So I, if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to. I know one of the things that always comes up is money, and Ed had run some preliminary numbers as far as what that would mean for tax rates, so I think we could probably talk about that a little bit, if people are interested in doing that.
Good. One thing real quick on the streets, before, at one point, you had a stoplight at Heritage and Hawkins. It's not on this list now, but I think on your original list, it was on there.
Heritage and Hawkins.
Yeah, it's.
Like, is one of the things we considered?
Yeah, I think it was on there as a consideration. I'm just thinking, for a quarter of a million dollars, when we're looking at the big picture, I realize a quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money, but when we're looking at the big picture and the number of wrecks that have been there, and we've done a study there, and it does, does warrant a stoplight?
Oh, something that's on the comprehend, or the capital improvements list or has been for a while, a stoplight? Okay, I understand.
And so, I was just wondering, is that something that can be considered to be added to this?
That would be for y'all to discuss, or for us to discuss.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sorry. No. Yes, I'm on this side now. But yeah, so, I mean, from the committee, we are just, now, now it belongs to council to discuss and determine what should be added, taken out, included, all of that.
Okay.
Yes. I do want to just point out that we did at the CPAC committee talk a lot about operating expenses, so I'm glad that we talked about that, as did turf, and making sure that that's planned for. We intentionally, I think, included things that were not going to add operating costs to the city budget, because of course, we need to be sensitive to that. So when we reviewed these, we looked at that with an eye to, these are items that would not add to our general operating budget, so. Questions? Anything I can do?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moore, did you want to talk about tax implications with this, these numbers?
If we were to go forward with the full 105 million, that would require an eight-cent tax increase. Looking at it, $100,000 piece of property, that would be $80 a year. $300,000 home, $240 a year, $20 a month. Keep in mind that if a voter or a citizen is over 65, their taxes are frozen on their homestead, so that eight cents would not apply to them. But that's what we're looking at, eight cents, and our current tax rate is right at 51 or slightly under. And these bonds would be sold over a five-to-seven-year period, like we did the street bonds. So that tax increase would be ratcheted up over time and not all at once.
Will there be some of the street bonds coming off so that it will balance out?
And, and yeah, we get the biggest bang for our buck initially, because there is some room for that. For, for, for one penny, we can issue 30 million, but that's just because of what you're talking about. Some bonds are rolling off, and we're going to use all that up with the, with the first penny, and every penny thereafter is about 10 million in.
So what was the, what was the total on the, on the, the street bond?
51 million.
That we passed in 2011?
52.6.
And then on the street bonds was?
Per hundred thousand, how much did it raise?
27 million.
Yeah, 27 million.
No, 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 he's talking about the one we just finished?
Oh, the, the.
The 2011, it was 52 million.
52 million. And what did it raise per hundred thousand on value of the house?
I think we projected it was going to be three cents, but it wound up being around two.
Okay, so $20 a hundred thousand, so $60 a year, so we're talking about doubling that, basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, more than double, quadruple, two cents to eight cents.
Well, some people, that's not a big deal. Some people, that's, that's, that's stretching it really hard.
Yeah.
And then, then we're talking about a lot of them that are already grandfathered in under 65, especially out in Ed's area.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of those people, even over there that live by me, are grandfathered in, so that means that we won't be getting anything from them. So the lion's share is going to be paid for by the rest of us, is there going to be enough of the rest of us to pay for this?
The eight cents takes that into account.
Okay.
And, and let me just, let me just state something. You know, this is, this work session is for, for council to discuss and deliberate, but please let the public understand, we aren't doing any of this on our own. Anything that gets passed or presented to the public will be voted on. This is not something council will decide. We're not going to decide yes or no. We're going to, whatever we decide will be put to a vote for the citizens of Longview, and however that election turns out, that's, that's how elections work. So just please be aware that you out there, you all will have the final say-so. We're just putting it before you to some degree today, discussing, so that we can know where, what direction to move, but we will not be making that decision on our own. That'll be a citizen vote decision, it'll come from our community.
Can I add one thing to that? That the recommendations that we're talking about were based on what we heard from the community through the comprehensive plan. So the entire goal is to put before the voters what we've heard from voters that they want to see us move forward with. So, thank you.
And, and you know, once again, this is, you know, the, the comprehensive plan was done with, with such great intention as all these things are, but once again, those, those plans require dollars, and, and we as a city don't have those dollars, not in our, not in our pocketbooks. We as a community have those dollars, but it's depending on if the community wants to spend those dollars on these projects. And so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see this at least moving in the direction that it is, because otherwise, that comprehensive plan document will sit there and, and collect dust like they have so many times in the past and nothing gets done. So at least it's up to the voters. You all will decide if it moves forward or not, not the seven of us. We decide to put it forward to you, and you all decide if you want it or don't want it. And if you want it, we will implement it. If you don't want it, we will move on and continue to strive to make Longview the best we can with what we have. But this is, will be a voter referendum, not a council decision, so. And you just want everybody to be understanding of that. So we're looking forward to, as it moves forward.
Mayor, one more thing, just for our edification. If we do indeed go forward with a November bond election, council needs to call that election sometime between August 8th and August 20th. So that's kind of our timeframe to decide what goes in the package.
That should not be a problem. I mean, I think we will, you know, I know this is the first time we've discussed this publicly, but these, these committee meetings have been going on since January?
Years.
Well, it seems like that, doesn't it? Yeah. They've been going on a long time. And so, this isn't the first time this has been discussed, it's just the first time we as a internal council has discussed this. But those of us that have been to some of those meetings and received all the information from these meetings, we, we have, this is not our first lay of eyes on this, on this, as it lies before us. So I think there's a lot, there's a lot here. There's a lot to bite off, if we so desire to bite it off, and if the citizens want to bite that off, I would be more than happy to implement that, because I think that's where we're, that's where we become a, a, a city on the, so, you know, there's be, there'll be a lot of, a lot of things going back and forth over the next month or so. We will discuss things, the citizens will discuss things, they will call each of us and tell us their opinions in a very nice and kind and respectful way, and we will listen in a nice and kind and respectful way, and then we'll respond back. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward to this opportunity that we have before us, because